For this evening's version of the City Council, the City of Escalon, regular meeting of December 16th, 2019. Thank you. Would you please join me in to salute our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Merkin.
Here.
Councilmember Kremick.
Here.
Councilmember Legero.
Here.
Mayor Protim Alves.
Here.
And Mayor Swift.
Here. And starting out this evening, I understand we have a presentation, and I have a feeling I'm going to turn this over to the chief.
You're correct. Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege tonight to conduct another swearing-in. This is actually the formal swearing-in, but the young man was sworn in on December 2nd in my office, so he could put him right to work. And he's been in the FTO program the last two weeks, working for us. And actually, the young man, Andy Andrew Halverson, is not really totally unknown. I think you may have seen him. He started with us in October of 18 as a volunteer. He's basically one of our own. Came in as a volunteer, was a volunteer for the organization, did quite a bit of work for us, assisted us in our vehicle maintenance program. He's one of the parties that got the, our emergency response vehicle up so we could use it for trunk or treat this year. He also did some repair work in the armory for us, and we had a little accident in there, so he's done a lot besides, and he's very handy. His background is in automotive repair, and then he decided in around 2018 to change gears, because up until that point, that's where he's focused. And he went to the Institute of Technology where he attained an associate of applied science in criminal, criminology and emergency response management. And that's where his interest in law enforcement began. Had the opportunity to talk to him there, and he wanted to get into law enforcement. And we discussed starting out as a volunteer and going forward, and then he put himself through the academy. He recently graduated from the academy and Delta College at the end of November, I believe. Is that correct? August, August. By the time we got the background done, we were able to swear him in. And so, he, he's going to be a good addition as a Level One Reserve. He's also tested, and he's on our list for full-time, so he may, that may end up being, where he'll wind up, depending on how the others play out that we're hiring for our January hire, and if we have any other departures. So, I have one in the works leaving us, so I may have two openings in January, February instead of one. But, it's going to be my privilege to conduct a more formal swearing-in in front of this audience. As you can see, he's filled the gallery with family and friends. Those in attendance include his mother Patty, his father David, his brother David Jr., and his wife Tessie. His wife will be doing his badge pinning, and so, we'll get on to that. And I've also told them that, once we're done with this, they don't have to stick around.
But you could, if you'd like to. Feel free.
Raise your right hand, you do that.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any actual reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well
and that I will well
and faithfully discharge
and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I'm about to enter
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I think he's wearing his vest, so he's Just push it straight in. Thank you, everyone, sticking with me through the several years this has been. I really appreciate this, and thank you for the opportunity. This is huge for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, do we have one more?
Yes. It's not on here. You might want to stick around, Andy, for this one. We have a second presentation that's not on your agenda. It's for a long-term employee.
Can we get Sergeant Flores up here, please?
Go.
So, Sergeant Flores has been with the city now for 20 years, so we wanted to present him with his service award tonight.
I think you'll find it appropriate. Tammy was looking for ideas, and I tried to offer some, but I don't know if they were any good. I think she finally came up with the idea.
Wow, sounds heavy, whatever.
Bowling ball. Bowling ball. It's alive.
There we go. Oh, yes.
Decanter.
Well deserved.
Hey, you got any words for us?
Wisdom.
You really got me.
Not me.
I'm speechless right now.
Not me.
Well, I'll be honest with you. When I, when I reached the, what's it, the 20 years on that day, and nothing happened, I'm like, maybe they're going to wait till the 25 year. Honestly, a lot of things went through my head. I'm thinking, okay, we're going to go to lunch, right? And then
Didn't take you to lunch.
He didn't take me to lunch, and then, then Sarah left and thinking, oh, Sarah's going to go get the cake from St. Mark. Sarah went to her mom's for something or whatever, and then she came back, and I'm like, okay, it's going to happen now. And nothing was there. I'm like, I was like bummed out, honestly. But, I really appreciate this. You really got me. It's been 20 years. I love it. Looking forward to the future. Looking forward to working with Sergeant Lackey, Halverson, the new officer, and everybody with Justin and everyone. I enjoy working here. I enjoy our communication, our, how we, you know, coming together and everything. I love it, and I wouldn't change it. Thank you.
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you, Gus.
Congratulations.
I'm glad I changed.
That's for water, Gus.
It's water, right?
Yeah, that's for water.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations. Was there anything in that decanter?
Nothing in it.
Oh, I was hoping we had to declare the meeting adjourned.
Nothing was in it.
Can't imagine working for the city for 20 years.
Fantastic.
Nice to be independent. Is he the only one in the family? A brother, sister?
In November. November 16.
It looks like the real glens for punishment have stayed, so, okay. Let's move on to the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. For example, regarding item number two, I will be abstaining from check number nine, six, eight, one.
I'd like to have poll number three.
Okay, and therefore, do I have a motion on the balance?
No, moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to pass the items one, two, and four of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero. And regarding item number three, Mayor Protim Alves.
I've had some requests for clarification on that, so that's what I'm going to ask for, some clarification. The questions were, in the drafting of this ordinance, is it considered an ordinance? Is that what we're doing here? Okay, in drafting of this ordinance, the language has been adjusted on multiple times, and the one thing they were concerned about was whether or not in that, there was language that said in the ordinance that the initial funding for the police department, percentage-wise, would never change. And the question is, is that language in this ordinance?
That's a different ordinance.
That's a different ordinance.
That's a different ordinance.
That would be, are they referencing to the sales tax measure? Because this is regarding
The department.
City manager appointments.
Okay, I'm back. I'm one ahead of myself. Okay, let's back up. I got this one here, too. And also, I read this one, and I was, to be clear on it, it's basically, the city manager has the authority to hire and fire at the upper levels with confirmation from the council, but in the lower level, there's not needed. Is that kind of the bottom line?
Correct.
Okay, we're good. I'm good. That's fine. Just going to clear that up. Where's the other one at? Is it on here?
Let's do this. Let's do this. If item number three, Councilmember, Mayor Protim Alves, okay, let's go ahead and get that approved first.
Okay.
I do need a motion in second.
We move on staff's recommendation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve item number three on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero.
Okay.
So, I think we're looking for a point of inquiry at this point regarding the last meeting's amendments. I mean, the last meeting's minutes, which would be part of item number one.
Right. Yeah, I need some clarification on that, which was the question was, again, what I said. Whether or not the language in there to, actually have the language in there that states that the percentages will not change.
So, a point of inquiry's been made regarding that item on the last meeting's agenda, and we're probably talking about somewhere in the text, I believe, of the sales tax.
We cleaned up the one part where there was concerns about might be or could be and all that.
Yeah.
We got that done. We got shell. We got that. The other item was just language to the effect that the percentages will not change. That was the other part of the request I had.
Well, it's not
But was it, I don't think that was part of the action that night, was it?
It wasn't, no. Well, it was, you had mentioned that, but it wasn't included in this. That evening, I believe you stated that the percentages would not change, so the concern was, why wasn't it in the ordinance?
Or it might be in the ordinance, because you're talking about the
It's not in the ordinance.
But we could add that statement to the minutes.
Can you?
The city manager stated that.
There you go.
Because that was, that's the intent. It's probably not in the ordinance.
Well, it should be written down somewhere, so we have some foundation.
Okay. Well, if she said that at the meeting, then that could be added, right?
I don't recall, honestly, because we talked about it a couple of different times, so I'm not positive.
I think you did mention that in the discussion, and again, we're back to the issue with previous meeting when I meant in the minutes where you would actually have to, if you wanted that in the motion, it would need to be additional actions, so therefore, you'd have to either revisit the whole issue or, you know, have an amendment. But I think at this point, if, and if that was mentioned in the minutes
If Jamie can listen to the tape and just confirm that that statement is in there, then it could be added. So, well, you could either approve the minutes, well, you already
We already did.
But you could reconsider, approve it with that change, assuming that it's, that it was stated, and I think it was. Or you could just bring the minutes back again to the next meeting, and
Why couldn't we ask for consensus to make sure that that's in, can't be in the motion? But if that, to make sure that that is included somewhere in the minutes? I mean, somewhere in the background of the motion.
I don't think we can modify the ordinance. Can we modify the ordinance?
We're just going to modify the minutes to add that the city manager stated.
But my question is, while she states it, is it law? Is it, is it the law, or is it something somebody stated? I mean, do we, if push comes to shove in a situation like that, can you, do we say, well, it was said there, but it was never included in the ordinance? I'd rather have the fact that it is included in the ordinance, so there's never the if she may have, may not have, or he or she may not have.
You would want that in the ordinance. You would want that somewhere in the ordinance or in the motion.
I believe we do. I believe we do.
Well, we provided the ordinance to the county, so I don't know how that affects, I mean, it doesn't change.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's really too late.
We're going to have to, yeah.
Well, it's never too late, and it might be too late just particularly because
What I'm thinking is, if it's approved by the voters, then any change to it has to be approved by the voters, too. You can't just, you can't just amend it.
Well
When's the deadline to get it on?
It was December 6.
It was December 6, so it's already been submitted to the county.
Mayor Protim Alves, the language that you're looking for is that the percentages
Will not change due to the, the new tax.
But, because I asked that specifically.
Because it was stated. It was stated that night.
It was, and I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident that Tammy had mentioned that it would not change, but you'd like to have it in writing.
I mean, there's no point in having a law if you don't have the language in there to support it. Because she may no longer be here, I may no longer be here, and then they're going to say one day, well, you know, it was never really in there, so, and that's, that's the sad part.
At least if it said the minutes, then you could look back and say, well, that was the intent.
10 years from now, it'd be great fighting those minutes.
Trying to think how you'd do something like that.
Yeah, me too.
Probably should have been caught by somebody last meeting. Huh?
Hard coded their budget.
There you go.
But I think that's
Is this possible, like, council consensus, to revisit item number one on the consent calendar and ask that the amendments be amended to state that, I think, the percentage was also, that the percentages to the police department would not change?
Would not be affected.
And would be, you mentioned that the percentages had to be the same. I assume that's law, on or to, on a special tax?
Well, the law is that the tax has to be used for the stated purpose. There's nothing in there about percentage.
I think the concern with the percentage was that we don't get the tax from the special tax and move general fund monies to another area. So, it was talking about the percentage that is allocated from the general fund to public safety to stay at that. And my thought was based on the 1819 budget year, because in 1920 is when we added the two officers, which is, or in the 1920 budgets, when we've added, and that is why the, what has pushed the sales tax.
So, I don't think there needs to be necessarily an amendment to the ordinance as submitted. But I think it is important that the council takes action fixing that.
And amends the minutes.
Well, fixing that percentage, and I don't know if that's just amending the minutes, or if that's an action we can take that specifically sets the percentage at whatever the 1819 budget is.
Right.
Because that's a separate action, I think, from the ordinance.
Yeah, you can adopt a formal resolution stating that.
Because I specifically recall asking the question, if the ordinance takes effects, takes effect, does that free up general fund money? And it was absolutely not. The percentages stay the same, so whatever we need to do to formalize that.
Well, then I would suggest that you do what Gary suggested, which is to revisit that
Item one.
The minutes.
So, how do we do that?
You just, you just make another motion to approve the minutes with that statement from the city manager.
Just recall, it said, the motion is to recall the minutes as stated, and to make an amendment?
That's fine.
Yeah, or to make an acknowledgement that
Okay, well, my motion is that we recalled the minutes as recorded and make the change to state that the percentages from the general fund will not change due to the new tax to the police department.
Counsel and staff acknowledge that that
And staff acknowledge that.
I have a question on that.
Is there a second first before?
Oh, second.
Okay, so now we have a motion on the table, and Jamie, I'll be asking you to read that in a minute, so, Councilmember Kremick.
Just a quick question. So, what if the, like, the demands for the police department go up? I mean, percentages go up and down, right, every year?
Which is what, so the special tax is to cover, so basically, what we're saying is that the percentage won't drop from the general fund that contributes to the public safety. So, whatever X amount of dollars come in for general fund, if public safety is 50% of that, there'll always be 50% of that regardless of what the special tax is. The special tax is meant to enhance that budget so that you don't have to go through layoffs in that public safety. So, we wouldn't, you know, the city couldn't divert, say, let's say, we're going to take the general fund and reduce its contribution to 40% and use that 10% in another area. That's not the purpose of that special tax. It is to enhance the public, the police department.
Thank you. This is a point of clarification. Take it.
I hope that was
Is there any further discussion on the motion? I will ask Jamie to read it back, just to make sure that everybody's satisfied with it. Maybe I'll, Jamie, if you don't mind doing that at this time.
Who's seconded? I'm sorry. Uh-oh. Thank you. Motion made by Alves and seconded by Legero to recall minutes as recorded and make a change to state the percentages will not change due to the new tax for the police department.
Okay. Is everybody satisfied with that wording?
Yes, I, or you?
Yeah, no, I think that's important, because it's strictly talking about the, the new tax measure. Because the economy's changed, budgets changed, so we want that flexibility if there is an issue, but not on the basis of this new tax.
Is there any further discussion on the motion as read? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Jamie, thank you. All right, fantastic. That was good. Staff communications.
Mayor and council, before you tonight are monthly department reports. The treasurer's report, police department, animal control, development services, building department report, recreation, public works, water department, and the wastewater treatment plant update for November. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions on the staff reports?
I have some questions about number six in regards to animal control.
So, are we all okay on the staff reports, first of all?
We do have another item on here to discuss animal control, too.
I can wait for that.
Okay.
Is there any questions on the staff communication, the staff reports? No? Okay.
I have a couple, a couple other items just to add in there. Just a reminder, tomorrow is our employee luncheon at 11:30. And then that city hall will be closed for December 23rd through December 27th. And I did, last Thursday, get from the county, they have assigned the letter to our sales tax measure, and it is letter S. So, that was a random draw. And then, I know that we talked about contacting the undeveloped properties after the first of the year, and staff really needs clarification of if we're going to be setting up group meetings, individual meetings, and what in particular are we going to be asking the property owners?
I think an inquiry at this point would probably be sufficient, without knowing why or how.
Do we just want to send a questionnaire to them and ask them to send it in, or do we want a schedule to meet with each individual?
Oh, boy.
What if we sent them registered mail with a questionnaire, and depended on the response, make a decision then?
Okay. And what kind of questions do we want to ask them?
You might want to ask them to begin with, do they have a desire to develop the property, number one? If they don't, why? If they do, great. I mean, what we're trying to establish in my mind is to see if there's a reason that we have almost 40 acres in the city limits that isn't being developed, because our next move is going to be in bringing more land into the town, which is, now you're going to have the 40 acres plus the new land. And it just seems to me, it's crazy to have all this infill and not do something about it. So, I just think it's, we need to find out however you guys want to figure this out, but we need to get some sort of communication going with property owners in this community to get a feel for why they have it, or why they don't want to develop their property.
So, if the property is on the market for sale
That's, you can't do anything about that.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just going to say, I'm going to rule those out and not sending out the questionnaire.
I don't know if it really, if I have a piece of land, and I own it, and I pay the property tax, and I don't want to do anything with it, I don't, why is that the city's?
We're not going to make them do anything, Peter. We're just trying to find out in order, before we move forward and do any annexations, that we're doing it, knowing that there's not, we're not taking that opportunity away from somebody else. That's all.
Well, I think it would be more that, and I think that just, I think that if you characterize it as a friendly inquiry, it would be interesting to know.
And the other thing is, I don't think you should limit the people that have property for sale. I think the same questionnaire should go to every one of them. And the reason for that is to get some feedback and see where we're at with the people in this committee that own property, and get their feedback on it. So, I would do all of property owners. I wouldn't eliminate them just because their property's up for sale. I would ask them those questions, if you're interested in wine, blah, blah, blah. Get some feedback, build a basis for what we're doing, so we get a feel what this community's all about.
Now, Mayor Protim Alves, a lot of these situations, we ask staff to do these things, and then we ask if they could send something to us before it's released. Would you want to do that in this situation?
Probably should.
Okay, what, council, I'm not, I'm just looking for consensus on this one. Would we like to see what's going to be sent out before it's sent out? Yay, nay?
I don't, I don't have any need to, I think that they can word it properly, and, you know, what do you plan on doing with your property? Are you going to build something there eventually? I mean, I don't think we need to have it come back just for approval, in my opinion.
So, you have a divided consensus on that one. So, I would imagine individually, if you want to go ahead and let us know what you're looking at sending out.
We don't have our problem sharing.
I mean, I think, do you have a pretty good idea as what we're looking at at this point? Just a friendly, inquisitory letter?
We'll try and pose some other questions within there to see.
I know that it's, Mayor Protim Alves saying 40 acres, but how many people are we talking, how many property owners? Because last I inquired, it was like we had 50 empty lots in town, infill. What do we really have? How many people are we going to send these things to?
I'm not sure.
We have about 20, like, single vacant lots.
20?
About, and then we have, and those are random, commercial or residential.
Commercial and residential?
Yeah, about that, and then we have a handful here and there that have the same owner, multiple parcels, same owner. So, in those cases, we can just consolidate and ask about all their properties on one questionnaire, because unless, it should be this, I would think it would be the same answer for, I think the biggest concern I would have at this point is a, is a lack of response. How much, how much you want us to pursue it, because a lot of them will probably not respond to it.
And that's an answer in and of itself.
Yeah.
They just may not care.
And so, how many times do you want us to prompt them, because a lot of them are probably not going to respond.
Be like, it's none of their business what I'm doing, my property.
Well, that, yeah, that, yeah, that's your answer, so, you know.
I'd be curious. I think it could be enlightening, those that do answer.
Yeah.
I'd like to know if there's some impediment that they believe is because of the city rules or some ordinance that we have in place, or something that's preventing them from doing it. It would be nice to hear back.
Or they don't want the town to grow, or whatever.
Right. I mean, it'd just be interesting to see what, you know, if they are willing to tell us, it'd be nice. Right, I mean, it'd just be interesting to see what, you know, if they are willing to, to tell us, it'd be nice at least, give them the opportunity to tell us if we need to look at some things that we're doing as a city.
And I think if you send a return receipt so people acknowledge they got the letter, that gives us a better understanding, because sometimes you'll send out those notices, they don't ever see them. But if they have to sign for that notice, then we're gonna know who got it, and we'll have some control in terms of what we're gonna be doing. The key here for me is that if we're gonna move forward and bring more land into town and develop, I wanna make sure if we do that, we've given everyone who has property an opportunity to develop it first, if they want to, if they want to, don't want to, like Peter said, it's not our business to tell them what to do with it. But I do feel that we have an obligation to let them know, we're gonna move forward with some development, and we need to know whether or not they're gonna be part of it or not. Because we only have so many EDUs to play with right now, and it's gonna be first come, first served, so I don't want anybody complaining later, why didn't we know, why didn't we know? Well, you did know, cause we sent you a notice, you're either in or you're out, simple as that.
Okay.
Clear, sorta clear?
Sure.
Clear enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have one, um, one other item, we, uh, sent out the request for proposals for our infrastructure modern, modernization and utility savings program, we did receive eight proposals back. Um, staff has gone through them and narrowed it down to interview four companies, and I'm currently looking to interview between the days of January thirteenth and fourteenth, it may be both depending upon the companies. Um, but I was just curious if, um, two council members would like to participate in the interviews with us with, um, staff, or if you guys just want staff to move forward on that.
January thirteenth, fourteenth, what day is it?
It's a Monday and a Tuesday.
Anybody? Anybody?
And this is, this is the thing where they're coming and telling us how to be more efficient with different things, right?
Yeah, we're, we're looking for the company that we're gonna let go through and do like a, uh.
And they're just gonna do a study or an audit, okay.
What, what's your timeframe, two hours, three hours, six hours?
Four companies, we're probably looking at four to six hours, I would say probably forty-five minutes each. Some discussion that, you know, staff and whoever sits in on the interviews is gonna have, so.
Where would the interviews take place?
Here.
In here?
Well, in a conference room.
What if you did them in here and videotaped them, so we could just watch the videotape at home? Then we could see what you said and what they said, and we'd already, you know, know, cause really, the questions are gonna be asked by you guys, not us, we're not gonna ask them a whole lot of questions. And it'd be easier just to review the tape.
I don't know.
What do you think?
I don't, I don't know, I guess I need to double check with IT, cause right now we do it through video through YouTube, so I'm not sure. We wanna YouTube the interview.
What's the difference?
Yeah, I'm just a little nervous, I don't know if I can make that big a time commitment, I'd be interested. I'm just not too sure if I can make that big a time.
So I haven't started contacting them, I don't know where we'll be, but, um, you know, just.
Well, what are you gonna be primarily looking at in this process?
So basically, I mean, I got four companies that I think are qualified, can give us a, a good response. Um, when we do these interviews, we're asking some, you know, um, questions more particular to Escalon and how they would handle it, um, and getting a fit for the team that's gonna work for us too, you know? Getting that feel whether they're gonna fit along our thinking lines or not.
So this group we're looking to interview is to do again what now?
It's the infrastructure moni- uh, modernization and utility savings program, so they're gonna do our energy audit, um, HVAC audits, um, the water meter program audit, um, and the potential of solar.
Didn't we do this once before with the company that came to us and?
We did, that was with NG, and they're actually in this pool too.
They're the ones who proposed.
Time, I think it was, um, they, it wasn't NG, uh, Optera.
Optera, yeah.
They, they had all the information they gave us, and we declined on some of it, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah, I remember, okay.
And who's gonna be sitting in on that, in, on that process from the city?
Currently myself, and I've asked Justin also, I had, I'm not sure that he has availability, but, um, I was considering Justin.
Here, here's what I'm, here's why I'm seeing this, you're the city manager, he's a public works director, you, this is what you go, this is what you do. This is what, and you under, you have, you guys have been here for a long time, and you have a pretty darn good read how, what would work and what would not work with this town, in addition to that, you would need to be working with them personally.
Correct.
So I would think that would probably be paramount, so I mean, again, we, I think, would be looking more along the lines of, you know, how do we feel about getting this thing done from our financial standpoint, and of course, you would be presenting us with how we would be doing that. And then we would need to make that decision.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to get down to the no, nuts and bolts, again, that's why you're you and you're you, you know, so.
I'm okay if you guys handle it.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Did you get, uh, quotes, like, have they already quoted you prices?
No, there, there are no quotes at this time, um, it's just to hire a company to do the initial study and evaluation about whether it's going to be cost efficient to do solar and those kinds of things, and if there's energy savings that could be implemented.
So you're gonna get three quotes?
I have three pro, I have four proposals for companies that I'm gonna look at.
Okay, so we'll see four different proposals.
No, you're, we're only gonna choose one of them to make the proposal.
But aren't they all gonna make proposals?
They gave us a proposal with their qualifications, now we're picking who's gonna give us the.
So the proposals are in?
Yes, with qualifications.
No, I'm talking about the value.
There's no dollar amount.
There's no dollar amount, right now, we're just choosing the actual company, not, and then they'll re-bring in to us a dollar amount.
So you'll, you'll interview the groups and then they'll bring you a dollar amount?
We'll interview them and select the one to come out and do the audit of the facilities.
I, I know what he's saying, you're, you're selecting them to do the work, but we don't know what they're gonna charge before we select them, right?
Um, they've given some guidelines in their proposal, like their percentages of profit and those kinds of things, but, um.
Shouldn't you, I mean.
There should be a ballpark somewhere, I mean, we should have an idea what the parameters of the costs are gonna be.
So their, their audit, on most of them, their audit is at no cost. So we're not obligating the city to a cost at this point.
So where does the cost come in?
If we move forward with their proposal, with, with the, with the plan that they come back with.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, I'll be in the interviews, put me down for the two interviews, I'll go.
Okay, are we okay?
You just want two interviews or all the interviews that?
How many are you gonna have, two days, not, you're gonna have two days of it?
I have four, I, I have, yeah, I haven't scheduled any of the interviews yet, we have four companies that we're gonna talk with.
We're not gonna do four days of it, are you?
No.
So what, two days?
Maybe one.
Okay, put me down, I'll do it.
Okay.
I need more information, I don't feel comfortable with the idea that, you know, I understand what you're telling me exactly, but you're taking four different companies, do not charge for the inspection, but do charge for the work. So, and you're gonna, through the interview process, to find the one you're most comfortable with, whatever language they use, or whatever they promise you is gonna make you comfortable enough to choose them, which is great. The concern I have, how does that really reflect though in terms of their costs, and that's what I would look at. I would like to know more hard numbers than I would about what they're willing to do and not do, I mean, that's part of the program, don't get me wrong, but I think it's important to know what kind of money we're looking at, because you might pick the guy that's, or the company that's just the most easy to work with, and you're happy with them, and to find out that they're gonna cost twice as much as the other people may have, who might not have been as cordial as you'd like, but sometimes that has to be weighed too, that's the thing I'm concerned about.
Be a good idea if you go.
I'm going.
Yeah, just go, I have a feeling this is how this industry works, you know, across the board.
Yeah, I don't want.
So, so, um, yeah, so, okay, you're in? And I think we're probably gonna be okay with that, right? Okay, what else do you have?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Couple minor things before we get to number six.
Okay.
As I, I think, uh, as counsel may have heard, I have one person looking, that's in background with the other agency, but we do have a hiring pool, so it's just that we're, we'll be in transition, cause we're, we're scheduled to bring on the second of the two that were approved in the fiscal nineteen twenty budget on January one. We have a hiring list for that, so we're hoping that we'll be able to fill out of that. The top three, actually, top two candidates are in background, the top, the third candidate's already been background and is currently on, employed, so we're in good standing there, and we'll see what we get. The other item is, is that we're just fortunate, uh, just to bring it to your attention, we're fortunate, we're not adding, or trying to add a couple bodies, because, uh, last week at about two o'clock in the morning, we had one of our patrol cars, they were through, they were on a traffic stop at, uh, Campbell and one twenty, and they were off the side of the road, second unit was behind the first unit and offset to the left. The first unit, the officer was there checking his MDC, the backup officer walked up to his car door, and within seconds, a vehicle came and took the car door that they were, had open, that was not even to the fog line, and took the door and bent it all the way around to the front fender. Fortunately, that's all the dam, I mean, significant damage, the vehicle's out of service until we get the insurance settlement, but we didn't have anybody hurt.
That's a good news.
And the driver involved was not impaired. CHP took the report, we don't know why or how he drifted, but if we hadn't probably had the second unit as an offset, it's my opinion, he probably would have plowed into our first patrol car and taken it all out. As a matter of fact, they were about to take a prisoner into custody, fortunately, prisoner was still in his own vehicle, vehicle in front. It was, uh, an interesting time, and, yeah, right now, the fleet is, I've got four vehicles out right now, various repairs, so our fleets, that, that didn't add to our fleet was, but, uh, just something to share that, and one of the young officers, uh, this is his second close call. He goes, this job's trying to kill me. Says he's got seven more lives, yeah. Unfortunately, but that, and he, yeah, this is his.
If you quit training, I'm so good, we wouldn't keep losing him.
His second close call so far, so he's, uh, he's getting a very, uh, high.
Chief, if I can ask a quick question, um, where are we at on that little tagging spree that happened Saturday night?
We're gonna see, that, it's, it's odd, it's random, I mean, there's really nothing to it. We found pink and blue.
And orange.
And, uh, it's, it's all kinds of different colors, and it's, it's really.
Oh, I never thought of that.
Stuff, so one was tagged with a check mark, some had FTP, which I've been told means.
Yeah, we figured what that means, yeah.
Police, I go, I guess we impressed somebody, you know, so, um, but, no. Uh, we're checking video from the various places that have video to see if we can come up with anything, but it's, it was, I mean, now, when they hit buildings, they hit cars. So it's, uh, it's a mess.
And the businesses, Justin, maybe this might be a question for you, have the businesses been contacted, I think, what do we have, forty-eight hours, do they have forty-eight hours to remove it?
They have been contacted, yeah.
Okay, and I think, uh, is Angelo in the audience, he is? I forgot to tell him, you said, go ahead and paint it yesterday, sorry about that. Oh, it's already painted over, yours is already painted over? Okay, but it's already done, okay, fantastic.
Did we check for the camera?
The, uh, the officer's following up on that, he, I don't know if he had a chance to do it today, but he's, uh, Officer Zombra was doing.
Hogan has cameras in the alley there.
Yeah, and he's got, he real, there were several places that actually had cameras besides that, he's trying to follow.
Do you think there's any connection between us, town visitors and that?
No.
That's.
I have a feeling it's, uh.
Local?
Yeah, a couple.
Young kid.
Idi- idiots, um, I'm sorry, from, that's my thought, but that, had, we do know of that there was supposed to have been a party Saturday night after the football game, and Sergeant Flores caught word of it and made contact with the young person who was throwing that party and.
Squashed it.
Did a preemptive recommendation that you not do that and force us to, so we're, we're not sure if we may have upset somebody by canceling their.
What, what, what sort of, uh, penalties, if any, do we have for that type of behavior? If we catch them?
It would largely depend on their age, with our current, recent change in our law, if they're eleven years and younger, there is nothing we're gonna do with them.
How about mom and dad, maybe?
Uh, we could probably civilly go after them, but that's about it, we're, we cannot legally charge anybody that's eleven years and younger unless they commit a rape or a robbery, I mean, a rape or a homicide.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, our current law, now they're twelve and older, we got, we got things that we can do, but it all depends on, on proof, and it depends, our biggest thing would be to cite them and then to go after the parents for restitution.
How about community service? As an option?
That would be up to the courts.
Now the courts decide that?
Yes.
Alright, I'm good.
Okay.
Anything else under staff communications before we go to item six?
We just had one item regarding business license renewals, um, those are currently out for all the businesses in town. Um, there's a lot more paperwork, uh, for certain types of businesses in town, because there's some state mandates that are going into effect in January. Um, so we've been getting a lot of higher volumes of calls, going over applications with everyone. So if you happen to talk to anybody regarding their business license and they seem confused, just guide them to call into city hall. We've been doing a lot of sitting on the phone with them and going over websites and stuff, um, for sick codes and those type of things uh, with new government regulations, so.
Fantastic.
It's a process, definitely.
Everybody's got a number of time on their hands, sure. Okay, are we okay with staff communications before we go to item number six?
Yes.
Item number six.
Let me take lead on this, sir. The reason this is coming to you in this format at this time is that, uh, last week, I was informed that, uh, of our four animal control personnel, two have given their notice that they'll be done at the end of this month. And then a third of the four, uh, is also looking for full-time employment, will, may be gone in the end of January, and the last of the four that are active can only work two days a week, cause she has a full-time job herself and is working elsewhere, and is looking as in background with another agency, so we may even lose her for those two days. So, uh, our current AC staff is, is, is been decimated. As council may or may not be aware, we, we operate with a part-time staff that works four hours a day, seven days a week. Since two thousand fourteen, my numbers show, we've gone through like twenty-one different people trying to hold. And, uh, I'll give you a, an example of the two that, uh, we're losing. One's been here six years, the only reason he's been around here that long is that he's been waiting to get into nursing school, and he's getting into nursing school, so now he, he can't take the part-time job, he's been working for us and another. But the other one we're losing has been here six months, and so, and the third one has been here only four months, and that's basically been, we've been lucky if we've been maintaining any staff eight months or longer. The few that we have are long-term, have left and gone to other jobs and come back, and, and then return to a part-time work. We have been, had an open recruitment on our website for the last minimum of a year. And, uh, we've actually even included the two junior colleges to try and, you know, recruit there. We've had very limited applications, I think we've met maybe four, and of those, we hired one, but three days later, uh, she had to resign because she was allergic to animals.
Oh, boy.
Uh, and so, and then a couple of other ones we've interviewed, uh, when they were interviewed, staff goes, no. Uh, cause they, that we, we wouldn't, we was, right now, when we do hire, it takes us probably eighty to a hundred hours to try and get those people so they can function on their own. Because our animal control personnel do more than just, uh, what you would think, they don't just feed and, and, and clean the shelter, they're actually handling calls to service that deal with noise complaints, licensing violation, bites, loose animals, uh, they'll follow up on license, as I said, licensing issues, they're doing that. They're also handling adoption matters and rescues to try and limit what we have there. So they're, they do a lot of functions, and so maintaining a part-time staff and training them has been somewhat, uh, challenging. What, you know, as I said, they're working four hours, it's eight to noon on weekends, and nine to one PM on weekdays, generally, they're assigned. And even then, because of some of the times they're working their hours, and if they're getting late calls, they've been extended, impacting our budget. So, we had come here because I'm looking for some direction in regards to what service level you are looking at. I do have some ideas, one, we can stay status quo and continue to try and work with part-time help. Uh, we have looked at, can look at contracting out, I made a simple inquiry today with Ripon and got a very cold reception, they've had the same issue, and they have finally moved to a full-time person and two part-time cattle helps, and they closed their shelter on Saturday and Sunday, the only thing, the cattle help goes in, cleans, feeds the animals, and that's. And they closed their shelter on Saturday and Sunday. The only thing, the kennel help goes in, cleans, feeds the animals and that's it. There's no, no public interaction and they only have, uh, uh, somebody, an AC person that's going to work Monday through Friday with interaction with the public. Uh, and that is one option. That's the other, third option that we can look at is looking at some type of full-time and maybe part-time help. But that will raise our costs in initial look, probably raise our costs about thirty thousand a year.
Thirty to thirty-five, yeah.
What's your wage? What do we, what kind of hourly pay are we looking at for these jobs?
For most of our help, it's all, it's standard minimum wage, which.
Well, it's a little bit more. I think, I think the, I wanna say it's either fourteen or fifteen dollars now. Are we at fifteen with minimum wage now?
Minimum is four.
Minimum's twelve now.
Yeah.
Be twelve and twenty-two.
I think we're, I think we increased it some. I think we're at fourteen with.
It's gonna be any business like that, that you're gonna have that issue, not just animal shelters, any business like that.
I got some comments about this real quick. Um, so first I got a little background story. So we, uh, found a cat in our tree. And, um, we kept it for a couple of days, but then we said, we're gonna take it to the shelter, see if it gets adopted. So we took it there. And we relinquished it and they took it in. And then, uh, we waited a, a week or two, I think, to see if it got adopted. They, they, they thought it would. But it didn't, we called back. My kids really wanted it back, so we went back and got it. So I found this cat for nothing, took it there and it cost me thirty bucks to get it back. Which is kinda funny, I think, but anyways. Um, so now we got the cat, but, um, I went in there today and, um, I, I took a tour of the place. And I talked to some of the staff, just going, okay, what are some of the needs and showed me around with the cat kennels and the dog thing and. Where they do the euthanasia and a big freezer full of the dead animals, which was kind of disturbing and I didn't look inside, but, uh. Anyways, it's, I, I, you know, getting a sense of the people over there and the interactions I've had is that they're really. They really care about what they do. It's a lot of, um, emotion, it's a lot of personality type for caring for these animals and it's a not, it's a very stressful. Environment, I think. Um, it takes a special person and I think that. You know, I was made aware of certain things as far as some basic renovations of expanding the, the cat kennel room, knocking down a wall. Uh, creating more space and then I asked about the, um, the staffing, which is interesting, this is coming up. I didn't, you know, and so. I think that, that that department of animal control and the, and the shelter and what they do has, has kind of been overlooked. We've had a lot of other things that we talk about and I think that they do a good job and that we need to find a way to. Uh, give them a boost somehow. We need to, we really need to step in there. Um, I think they do an important job of keeping the stray animals off our street and they do a lot of work. So my direction, my opinion is that we need to find the funding to, um, get the staffing to where it needs to be. If we need to pay more to get better candidates or make it more, um, attractive. As well as maybe following suit with Rippon and, uh, finding somebody that wants to commit to full-time. And, you know, you gotta have a point person out there. You gotta have somebody that's running the show. And I think that we need, another thing that made me aware of is that their HVAC system doesn't work. Their heater and their AC is out, uh, according, and so I feel like it's been neglected a little bit, ma- probably just overlooked. And so tonight, I wanted to voice my concerns and see what we can do to infuse something into that department and help them out.
I inquired about that. I heard about the HVAC and that's, that was the first that we had heard that it was out because usually when anything like that, I'll bring it to Justin's and show. I mean, in most of these buildings, unfortunately, in my building and I know over here, I've got employees over there and our HVAC system works. And, but they still have heaters underneath their desks because they're cold and in the winter, they'll run fan, or in the summer they'll run fans because. It's just, it's just the nature of the HVAC, but we're looking at it. And we do have money in the capital improvement budget to address. The cat kennels and some other things out there. We put it in this year. It's in our CIP. It's just projects that we're getting to.
Right. I'd like to see those projects happen, yeah.
Staffing levels have always been a challenge, you know, and it's where, you know, council sets the budget and work within that budget, so.
I think we need to infuse some money into that department.
You know, unfortunately, I agree with Councilmember Cromick and, and the reason I say unfortunately, because I think that for something like that, you probably are looking at. You know, full-time position and give that a shot or at least advertise along that route. Those are tough hours and I think the people you're trying to attract, a lot of them, a lot of them go to school. Um, or a lot of them may not be motivated, but some might be motivated, but they may not be able to fit with those little hours. So, I, I, I kinda sort of see the same thing, you know, you have to take the plunge with a person out there full-time.
Candidates that we could look at and we've had some discussions of how we would formulate that. We could probably work at a thirty-hour full-time, you know, thirty-hour prorated vacation with, with medical. That would, could attract bodies and then go with kennel help and then decide how we're going to, you know, which would help.
So then the shelter wouldn't be open seven days a week?
We would not be open seven days a week.
Well, I mean.
The kennel help would, we would not be trained to that level to deal with the public.
Trade-offs, I mean, that's.
As it is now, our patrol officers handle calls for service when AC's not around, so they're doing that now.
Is there any kind of collaborative process between them and let's say Hagens or any of the other vets or any of the other groomers in town? In other words, is there, do the other, and this is probably a question for them, do they, do they need to have the shelter succeed? As part of what makes their situation better? In other words, I wonder what they would think about this.
Don't because, uh, we use their services, there's two clinics, there's Hagens and then we use.
Paul's.
That we utilize their service, plus we have a spay and neuter program that we utilize a traveling vet that actually allows us. She comes in and will do some of the, the clinics, day-long clinics that we're trying to get vouchers out. And we also use her vet license for our personnel who are trained for euthanasia. And that's the biggest thing is that the staff, as Councilman Cromick pointed out, they are very committed to not. Trying to euthanize animals.
Hmm.
They spend a lot of time and effort in either adoption or rescues. I mean. I've had the city manager question some of my expenses at AC.
That's the finance director.
I know, okay, the finance director. Because we've, we've paid for some transport of rescued animals.
Yeah.
Uh, we paid some gas mileage, which, uh, the finance director was doing her job, questioning, you know, and. But I was authorizing it out of my budget, so we have been making those efforts. But again, it's, you're talking about training personnel and we spend, we're spending our wheels hiring. I mean, I don't know how much I impact our HR budget because of constant applications, reviewing. Medical exams for the employees, the background investigation, the credit checks, then we start them in the training. I, I don't have a cost for you right now on that.
Yeah, but I think that's part of the problem with this issue. There's a lot of training hours to this thing.
Realistically.
It's not like.
For what we want them to do, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can start somebody out, you know, just doing some pretty basic stuff and get them in the door and you can probably start your people, you know, it's pretty, some pretty basic stuff and. Slowly work up, but for you to have somebody, they need to be, you're right, a lot of hours of training from the get-go. And so again, that might be another reason why you might be looking at maybe a full-timer instead. You know, somebody who you feel a little more comfortable in making that investment, granted, that means in a way you're putting all your eggs in one basket. I understand that, you know, but in terms of at least attracting somebody into the job to begin with.
That's, that's the reason for tonight's discussion was to try and deter, get, uh, consensus from council. What option did you want us to look at? Status quo, contract, explore contract?
Cause I did, I did speak with, uh, city of Oakdale and they are open, um, to contracting.
How are they, how are they doing?
They contract with Riverbank, Riverbank contracts with Oakdale right now.
How are they doing? Do they have some of the same issues?
Uh, didn't it sound like it?
Okay, I'm wondering if they structure that you have a person on top that you take care of, you pay well. And then, you know, you go, you have your other, other people underneath them, but again, it's ultimately the same concept. You have a full-timer. And you make sure that, you know, you take care of that full-timer and then.
Yeah, I imagine they have more than one. I mean.
Well, yeah.
When I was with the city of Series, we contracted with the county. And Dominique was with the city of Houston and she was part of that as well. What we initially paid for our services was sixty thousand dollars a year. Well, then the county got into issues with their shelter and had to rebuild. And they basically told everybody, if you wanna use our shelter, you can become part of our JPA. Well, or you go find your own. We went and became part of their JPA. Our cost went from sixty thousand. To five hundred thousand a year. And we ended up actually paying about two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand a year for animal control services after licensing and fines. Were taken out as revenue.
I am not, uh, in favor of, of outsourcing this. I think we should have our own, uh, animal control department. And I'm not in favor of status quo. I don't think that status quo is possible. It sounds like it's at a crisis point. And so I, I'm in favor of having, uh, you know, most likely somebody who's already working there. Let's get a point person out there, let's, uh, you know, full-time and let's make it worthwhile. And then let's, let's find a way for them to, uh, find the staffing that they need. I think it's important. I think it's an important department.
Any other council?
I'd like to say something here. First of all, before we jump any direction, let's do some comparisons. I understand the chief's analogy or his comparison with the situation regarding, uh, Series and where else they contacted with. But I think it'd be worth our time to investigate a combination with Oakdale and see what it is that they would offer and how would it pencil out for us. I would think that in combination of exploring the other thing like you suggest and weigh them both, rather than jump on one or the other, let's take a look at both of them and then weigh them. And then I think we'd be a little better off making a decision than just emotionally saying, let's just do it. So let's take some time and let's investigate both of them and then come back to us and then let's make a rational decision.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how Oakdale works, how they structure theirs. If they don't seem to be having the same problems.
Better deal?
It'd be, yeah, that'd be worth, uh, worth the first step.
Well, I think.
Well, the, the animal shelter's been an issue since I've been on council. You know, it's an ebb and flow, you know, it's, we have volunteers, we have, you know, full-time, part-time. We've kinda worked through different scenarios with it and we've looked at maybe shuttering ours and going with the county. So it certainly seems like we should kinda look at the options to see what's best gonna serve the community. You know, you can't just keep having turnover out there and trying to get people up to speed. So it may benefit the department by partnering with another agency or the county and trying to get them to, to give us some stability out there. But again, it's cost, you know, what's gonna cost, what's gonna be the best way to go forward. If it's cheaper to just have a revolving door of, you know, people out there, then that might be the best for the, for that, uh, department. But I, I would guess probably not. So we've had some excellent people out there. They were absolutely dedicated. You know, but they, they move on to full-time jobs, they move on to better paid different careers, so.
That's exactly what we, we're, we've seen many dedicated part-time staff that have worked for us, but. As I said, you know, the college students that have been here for maybe twelve months and then they, you know, they go off to find full-time. And that's what's happened with this staff that we have now. They're finding full-time positions.
It is what it is. I mean, it's nobody's fault.
And I can't fault them.
It, it's, you know, it's nothing about their dedication or their passion for it. It's just, you know, they have careers and lives that they have to. You know, be responsible for too. So it's, I think we do need to kinda look at our options to see how best to move this forward and try and establish some stability out there. The, the community has, uh, are not, it's not consistent throughout the community of what their expectations are for the shelter out there. You know, um, before we tried to staff it, we could only open it for very short periods of time to allow for adoptions and that really didn't work. And you needed somebody that was available on the weekends because that's when people were available to come down and do the adoption. So, you know, it's really a, a, a trade-off on, on staffing and when we can get them to keep the doors open, so.
And one of the issues with the county that I'm concerned about is that they actually were approaching us for overflow. To, to try, at one point, but they haven't revisited that and they were in those same discussions with Rippon's shelter. As overflow because of what it's costing them, because the county pays to shelter their animals at, and I didn't realize this until I had this discussion with them. Was Stockton, and they're paying like three to five hundred dollars an animal.
And that's a, a good point. I think if, if, and that was one thing that some of the staff of the animal shelter talked to me about today was that. As the capacity for Escalon's animal shelter increases, if you can hold more animals and there's overflow that they can get, and she was telling me different statistics. But that brings in revenue to the shelter. That brings in revenue that you can use to, uh, keep the shelter going, pay for people.
Well, I, I will tell you that the shelter doesn't bring in a whole lot, you know, even with the adoptions, I mean. Like, for eighteen, nineteen, it was twenty-six thousand and it cost us a hundred and ten thousand to operate it.
It's not, and then the revenue that we were thinking about would have been if we were, and we actually, which is one of the reasons why. Uh, discussions with, uh, the city manager and the public works about expanding our area. And we were, we were discussing that to, to try and recoup some, as been council has always directed us, look at ways to generate revenue. We were looking at to get some of those animals from the county, but the county hasn't come back. The person who contacted us has retreated from that position and they haven't come back to us. So we don't, I'd have to reach out to them, see if there's still any interest in that. And that was several months, that was probably almost a year ago. When my, ourselves and Rippon were both contacted and they have not reached back out.
Yeah.
It, it certainly seems like the community has an appetite for the animal control. And it's, there's a benefit to the community to have somebody right here that can come and take care of a lot of the issues they take care of, but. There is a, a cost associated with it and that cost may be, you know, not sustainable. You know, so, but looking at options to try and continue that service or improve the service, I think that's where we should be looking.
So chief, do you have a few, uh, options to work with? It sounds like a good first steps to be looking at Oakdale and look at what, what is working?
We will, we will look at and see what Oakdale can offer, cause I know as, as the city manager said, Oakdale contracts with, with Riverbank. You know, how many, how many AC officers they're putting on and how they're, they would probably have to look at what our kennel stats are. To give us, you know, whether or not they're gonna house their patrol services and hours that we're gonna walk, so we'll have to.
Well, I, I mean in both, in both directions, you know, number one, take a look at it and see what, what are they doing right? How can we emulate their situation or remain independent? Or number two, what are they doing right? Do we wanna become part of that? You, see, you know, from both directions.
You gotta understand something, Oakdale's how much larger than we are.
And they have a foundation, also, by the way.
That's right, because there's a lot, there's a lot of, you can't do apples against apples when you're not doing apples against apples. What we have is a different situation. What we could possibly entertain the idea is that if we did some sort of a agreement with another community. May, maybe Oakdale or whoever, maybe they could part-time staff ours as well and use our facility in combination. Which would probably lighten up some of the responsibility and costs. So there's a lot of variables there that we can explore. And then once we come back and then we weigh them all out and try to make the best decision for everyone involved.
So has this discussion helped or hurt you?
I think the discussion probably went the way I anticipated.
I did have another comment.
You don't have options. We did give you options.
Well, I think there are certain government services that we provide that, yeah, they're not, they, they frankly just lose a lot of money. They're not gonna pay for themselves. That's the whole point of it. So I, in, if it costs us a hundred thousand dollars to run it, what's it gonna cost us to contract with Oakdale or anybody else?
Find out.
It's gonna cost, well, it's gonna, it's probably gonna cost more than that. So it's one of those things that's just gotta exist and we gotta do the best we can and that place needs some, it needs some TLC.
We'll keep.
Okay.
I'll keep trying to put the Band-Aids on it until we get answers for you.
I appreciate it very much. Matters presented from the audience. At this time, the public may address the city council on any item, not on the agenda, that is within the authority of the council. The speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. I'd like to be able to hold field of that tonight. You know, my chief, I keep an eye on the, the clocks just because we're already into the eight o'clock hour. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. The ter- determination of whether an item is within the authority of the council is a discretionary decision. Made by the mayor. So this is your chance to get up and please say something. Say your, speak your piece if you'd like.
Ladies, gentlemen, my name is Ken Goff at fifteen sixty-two Daniels Avenue, Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, I've, uh, I don't know if, a lot of you, a lot of folks know who I am. I'm a large car collector, like cars. Uh, and I have a facility for a lot of my cars, uh, out of town. And we've had some maintenance problems that I had to shuffle around a few of my cars. One of them ended up at my house. It's a nineteen sixty-five Buick, um, Bonneville, four-door. It's fully restored. Uh, and if you notice outside, it's raining. So, um, the car is, uh, too valuable to let sit out in the rain. So I erected a ten by twenty, um, canopy, went to, had Costco, bought a couple of them just in case I needed two. Not to put two at my house, just the one, um, to shelter the. Um, to shelter the vehicle for about forty five days until I could get the car back to my facility. I put the the, I installed, and I say these all around town, so I'm thinking, okay, I'm I'm pretty safe. I installed it on the second of this month. On the fourth, I got my first notice to take it down. After that, I spoke with Mayor Swift on the sixth. Um, he met me at my house, appreciate your time, uh, to work out some kind of um something, some kind of consideration, some kind of something because of the circumstances. I understand it's it's not a full time thing. I don't want it at my house. I don't want it there, but I'm just trying to protect one of my assets. Now, I'm I'm in an unusual situation. So what I was asking Mr. Swift about was, is can we find some kind of um a temporary solution, some kind of a you know, a stay uh of some sort because of this uh situation I'm in. I will sign any document, want me to sign, saying it won't be there for more than sixty days or forty five days. I need forty five because where it's raining, by the time we get crews out there to try to help on the roof and things that we're working on now, it's, it can become a problematic. Not only that is, for the next two and a half, three weeks, we might as well just everybody go home because that's what's happening with all the trades. Christmas is here. So I'm really in a bad position to actually tear it down. And even with my, I've got an eight hundred dollar cover on the car. But even with a cover, if any of you folks have ever had collector cars, a cover in the wind, in the rain, actually does more damage to a fifteen thousand dollar paint job. So I guess so tonight, um, and that's what I'm looking for. I've received three pieces of correspondence. Of course, the first one I received from staff saying, I I can't have it. And and we addressed that, me and me and Mr. Swift addressed that. He came up with some some ideas, but really didn't know really where to go with it. The other day, I received a second notice saying I have to hurry up and move it, uh, or I'm going to be fined. And I just thought it was funny that it says I have to remove it by Tuesday the fifteenth. Kind of doesn't exist, but we, I understand what you're trying to say. And then I received this one from Justin. Justin came to my door and we had a great conversation and we discussed it. Then today, I was visited again by the police uh with another one, saying, uh, move it or we're going to find you. It's just, they just get nasty, nasty, nasty. They go, as you can imagine. So I guess tonight, i- is it out of ordinance from what I've read? It is. It is. Um, not supposed to be there. Um, I know consideration was given um to a gentleman off of Genevieve. Uh, this is a completely different type of a structure. They're talking about a metal structure. This is a canopy. Um, this is not one of those cheapie harbor freight canopies. These are very, I'm not going to put something underneath something inexpensive. It's going to blow away. When I anchored it, it's not just sitting there waiting for a large gust of wind to come up and take and blow it away to my neighbor's yard. Uh, I anchored it down uh with with redheads. It's not going to go anywhere. My home is is very well tended to. Justin can attest to that and so can Mr. Swift. Um, you know, it's beautified and all nice and pretty and new roof and new paint and cutters and, you know, all the nice landscaped and I'm living in a nice neighborhood. So I guess tonight, I I don't know, hopefully you can rule on this only because um as of tomorrow, um, I'm going to incur my first fine of a hundred dollars if it doesn't come down. I don't want to take it down. I hate to take it down. Only because it's going to do more damage. I mean, I hate to think about it. It's going to do more damage to my car than a hundred dollars. I'll leave it up, pay the fine. I mean, I hate that. I mean, that's kind of a ridiculous way to look at it. But I I'm, I just need to know if we can do, I know you don't, you can't rule it tonight. You're pretty much here just to hear me out. But if we could, maybe break a rule or two and and make some kind of an exception. You know, I'll sign a city document, you know, some from legal saying, you know, it's got to be gone by this day and give me an exception. That's it. I'm not, no one's living in it. I have, if you're interested, I have a picture of the shelter, if you'd like to see it, where it's located in the yard, and it's, and a picture of the car that's in it. So you know that I'm not lying to you saying, I got four guys living inside there. I mean, if 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 you want to see that, I have that, you know, for you guys to see. Um, it's up to you.
Yeah, I was going to, I'll I'll vouch. It is a nice shelter. It is a nice car.
And you saw the car.
I will vouch to that. Yeah, it is not, yeah.
I have a question. So what's the, what's the appeal process?
The appeal process is I have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars to be heard, which I can push him back on. I think it's silly that I have to pay to have someone talk to me and I thought kind of that's what my taxes do.
Is that accurate?
Yes, and and if he wins the appeal, then he gets that money back because the city has to incur costs to have a hearing officer, et cetera.
The hearing officer is to be fair and impartial, yes?
So it sounds like there is a process to go through. There may be an upfront cost, but if you're successful on on the appeal, it sounds like that money gets returned.
If you look at it to the letter of the law, I'm not going to be successful in my appeal. Uh, it's not. I mean, if we go and I pay the two hundred and fifty dollars and we have this uh judiciary who's going to say, I'm blind of justice and I'm going to look at the way the ordinance reads and what you have, I have failed. I guarantee it. I'm looking for some professional consideration because of this unusual circumstance. That's it.
The the biggest problem we have is it's not an agenda item, so we can't take any action on it.
Well, and I I'm going to, I'm going to refer back to October the seventh. October the seventh, it was brought up for the uh or for to um grant the gentleman his his uh his amendment to go ahead and keep the, or keep his infrastructure. And and that was heard and voted for the same day. So I'm referring back to October the seventh, which I.
It was on the agenda.
Yeah, was it?
It was on, it was on the agenda, but it was also a project.
How about this then? Maybe maybe if we could just push it to the next meeting. Hare it now, put a stay on this. I mean, if I got to take it down, I'll take it down, but I hate to take it down now. It's raining and it I, it's just too nice a car to sit and get wet. Trust me, I've made phone calls to friends and every old person I know that someone has passed and they got a spot in their garage. I've tried. And there's just no one around.
Well, see, and I thought, you know, we were in that, we did have the text conversation the other day and I thought, you know, actually this might be a good idea for down the road, you know, having like an exception, you know, to the, as long as, because I think we have exceptions for like one of those pods in front of a house or like a garbage, like jilted container, something like that.
Or when people move.
Something like that. Down the road. And like I say, I'd much rather codify this than, and unfortunately in this situation, I think we we talked about that too. It's like, ah, it's already happened. You know, now what do we do?
Right. So I again, like I said, I'm just looking for some compassion, a little bit of professional consideration. Because you guys are going to go past the house when that current canopy is gone and here's this gorgeous car getting beat to death in the rain.
I have a question. If, what was your name again? Sorry.
Ken, Mr. Goff, Ken Goff.
Mr. Goff does, goes through the appeal process. How long does that take? And and does he still keep incurring fines during that time?
He can and he needs, he um, the hearing must be held within thirty days of their, the request.
But he's, if he keeps it up, he he could still keep incurring fines?
Well, here's the thing, chief, I know we're past the five minutes, but I think we're probably coming close in conclusion on this. It sounds like the best option would be going through that appeals process and just make sure that, and we've had this conversation too about, you know, fair and impartial.
I I understand where you're going, but the problem is, is that I I can, I I'll be the worst judiciary person on the planet and I will, I will be the judge saying, I have failed. It it's, it's happened. It's already happened. So going through the appeals process is, that's, well, it's just throwing the tank. Like I said, I'm asking for just professional courtesy at this point. The, I I will fail the the amendment process. I guarantee it. I I have. But now it's just, do I ruin a car? You know, I mean, you know.
Right.
Well, you know, I'm I'm a valued citizen, uh, own two businesses here in town. I'm I'm still here in town. My kids go to town. I go to church in this town. You know, I'm I'm looking for some professional courtesy to to just, and and for a small amount of time, you know. Do I want forty five days? Yes. Can I try to push it to thirty? I I'm going to have to go up there during my my own Christmas time and help put a roof on this thing.
What will those fines add up to like after? How often do you get another fine? Does it last like a week and then you find them again or how does it go?
I read the ordinance and the ordinance shows every day, first day's a hundred dollars or every consecutive day goes to two fifty to five hundred and then five hundred every consecutive day. So it just runs into silliness.
Five hundred dollars a day?
It could go up to that. It's a one hundred dollar citation and then it can accrue daily. So then the second time you warn is two hundred, the third time would be five hundred.
Wow.
We typically don't go into daily. We, in the past, staff has practiced weekly. We do seven days um because we don't like the idea of finding someone daily either, so we do it weekly. And that's easier for our staff to keep up on as well.
Well, I would say this, if it was up to me, if I had the magic button, if it was dictatorship, I would grant you that professional courtesy. I'd say, I'm not going to find you. I'd get you to sign something legally saying, take it down for forty five days. But I don't think we have, I don't think we can do anything really. I, we would be breaking protocol. I don't think we can rule on this right now. I don't know what we can really do.
Can I, can I ask for a stay then till the next council meeting so then you can answer it and then we can discuss it for the next time, come up with a decision then without fine?
What's the legal thing there?
There's, there's no provision for doing that.
So the project that he was speaking about on Genevieve was a different scenario where that person was keeping it. It was a temporary structure, that metal awning uh with Mr. Reese. Um, but because of its size and location with no setbacks um and five hundred square feet, it went through a conditional use permit and a variance, so he paid to go to planning commission and get approval. He had a process. His is also located in a different area in the back of the yard behind the fence as were, this one is in the driveway towards, right in the driveway, along the driveway. Um, if he's saying it's here from December second, um, I mean, a couple, a couple of weeks have gone by. I don't know if it's, and if it's something they could do if they wanted to give the initial thirty days. I mean, I would be fine with doing that. We didn't know about the car. We haven't, we haven't, we don't know any of this background until tonight, so.
What do you mean thirty days? We could say we're going to give them thirty day window?
If Ann thinks that's fine to allow it for thirty days.
That would, that would help me.
I mean, I.
Well, I mean, there's, there's no provision for doing that, but you you could.
Well, why does Dominique say it then if there's no provision?
Well, council could direct staff.
You could direct me to let it stay there another thirty days to add to the forty five days. That's, that's fine. As, and all we do is mark the file and give the debt, move it out forty five days.
Yeah, and and the worst part I like to, where I'm looking at, it looks great. I mean, I mean, in terms of, you know, it's solidly built, something like that, you know, but the other part, like I say, like I, I found that, you know, fortunately, and I think we talked about this too, dang it, when we give exceptions, man, this is when we usually get burnt. So with some way, somehow.
Well, I'm, I'm.
That's why I think it'd be a great idea to do this down the road.
This is a pretty, pretty heavy exception. I mean, and and I've got everything to back up.
I know, I know.
No one's living in it, you know, it's it's brand new and.
I'm not worried about getting burnt by anybody, so I would say that I would like to give him thirty days before we issue the next citation and.
Thirty days from the initial um.
No, no, thirty days from today. I would, I was asking, I would love to come today and ask for forty five, but I know that's pushing it and that's the schedule that I've got up there. But if I got to be thirty, then I'll push things aside and do what I can. Well, as we.
I would.
We'll move things over and I'll stick it back in there somehow.
I'm in favor of giving him thirty days from today to uh move, to figure it out. And that, and then at at the thirty day mark, which would be January sixteenth, um, it, the fees start back up.
My, my question is, I seriously doubt whether some city staffer went out the second day after this happened and discovered this on their own. Was this complaint driven?
Yes.
That's what I'm afraid of.
But they'll be at the next meeting and go, what did you do?
They'll be at the next meeting saying, how come you're doing something special when you have this rule?
And and I agree, you know, and and I'm going to reference back again about a few months back when someone was moving in on Countrywood and a very large tractor trailer had to be parked on the street for quite some time while they loaded and unloaded. And I'm sure that made some people happy on the street as well, but grant, access was granted. So I'm I'm looking for that same consideration.
Well, and like you say, and see, I'm kind of sort of on the opposite end as long as, because you did, it looks great and we talked about that. It's something loo- looks great.
Yeah, I didn't put up a pile of junk, you know, I put something that's going to be nice because I didn't want it to fail on my car.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah.
It had to be a a nice piece.
But I know darn well what's going to happen to us if we make an exception. That's the problem. I I, you know, then we'll only make an exception here, make an exception there. So where are we at consensus wise?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from the staff. I'd like to hear the staff's recommendation.
What do you guys think?
Well, I think Dominique indicated that thirty days from the first notice.
I mean, we, we, we follow municipal code, so as the code reads, it's not supposed to be up in the front yard setback. If the council was willing to agree upon providing an extension, um, we we would follow up with that and just update the file and put a letter out tomorrow confirming the consensus of coun- council tonight and then give the deadline of that date.
What do we do about those people that called in?
So in the meanwhile, that the response would be that that person went to council and it was a consensus of council to.
It's similar to the extension you gave to the coal pits.
So.
Yeah, my, I'd, I'd love to, dang it, I'd love to, but I just don't think I can. I mean, that's the, what do you guys think?
I, I can, I can do it. Yeah, and if, who complained? Was it just one of your neighbors or?
The neighbor.
Not that's like not to be disclosed.
Oh.
Because there could be.
So so there's a complaint and there's no provision, no ordinance that allows for this type of structure. There's no provision for a temporary structure based on inclement weather or some act of God. And there's no other provision that is in the ordinance that would actually um give us the authority to grant any kind of a, an amendment or an extension or anything.
Well, I'm just going off what Dominique said and then saying that's something we could do, so that's why I went with it. And I also think those fees are quite exorbitant. Um, so those are the two reasons that I'm, you know, coming to the aid of this gentleman because I think he's got justifiable reason and yes, the neighbors are complaining. And I guess I could deal with that when that comes up in my mind.
Yeah, a small little sidebar note is that I I used to have one up.
Yeah.
Um, two, three years ago, had one up, had it up for a couple of years. Um, then uh my neighbors, Rick and Leslie Buah, I'm sure you, some folks know Rick and Leslie Buah. Um, their hundred foot Cypress has decided to fall on my house. And then, of course, fall on the shelter, which was protecting a nineteen fifty nine lad boat that was restored and it ruined and smashed the boat. So I lost that piece, but the canopy was also smashed, so I didn't replace the canopy. And 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 I, we tackled all, now my other boat that I have has got a beautiful fifty nine Chris Craft is back, it can back up there as well. So I had one and no one said anything. It is up there forever. So I think, so I put this brand new spanking beautiful one up and now it's my complaint.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think this is going to go for you tonight. I'm, I'm, I've made my position clear, but I do think that we should, we could um look at a a temporary thing in the code where if somebody has a situation that's unique where they need something for a certain amount of time, uh, you know, whether it's thirty days, then we could come back and look at that. What do you think of that?
I think that's on the, we actually discussed a few days ago.
That's not going to apply to this situation.
Well, unfortunately it won't. No, no, it won't. So I mean, it is, our, our hands are kind of sort of tied at this point.
My suggestion would be go around town and try some, but find somebody that has some indoor storage.
I've been doing that for two weeks.
Check with Tom McCoy out at the the corner of McHenry and.
Catherine.
Catherine. He's got the big warehouse out there. Used to be the Chevy dealer. He may have some open space in there that.
What's his, what's the gentleman's name?
Tom McCoy.
It's Quality.
Yes, yes, Quality Water guy.
He will, he will.
You know what? Yeah, if we're nothing else.
He's got the showroom.
He has, yeah.
The old showroom there. Uh, if he's got the keys to it, he could open it up and drive your car in.
Sure, sure.
He has stuff in every bay, but they're not full by any means, so.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay, I I'm going to go back to.
I didn't think about that last week.
Sure, I'll go back to my original position was, this is going to start tomorrow. I'm going to be getting fined, so can I at least have to the end of the week then? Because that way I find, if I can talk to him or I got to do something else, I mean.
I don't have a problem with that.
Tomorrow is the deadline for the, for the fee to be submitted if he wanted a hearing. We extended the the deadline for the citation till Thursday.
Only if I pay the fine?
By Friday.
Only if I pay, the way I read that is only if I pay the two fifty, will it be extended till Thursday?
No, no, we went ahead and extended it the two, two days. So if you opt not to move forward with the hearing, we're not going to check back up on it until Thursday. That was the date we assigned.
Okay.
We extended it out another two days.
Okay, so if, that gives me time to tear it down and to place it somewhere.
Yeah.
We can't. It's not a.
Well, it sounds like the gentleman doesn't want to appeal anyway. There's really.
I can't. I'm going to lose.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to lose.
Quality Water, that's the name of the business.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've heard of them.
Quality Service, yeah, Quality Service.
So you, the next, is it Tuesday he has the last date or when is it?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday is, is the day we have down.
So he has time to go out and talk to Bob and, or what's the name over there?
Tom.
He can move the car over there.
Yeah.
All right.
If, yeah, if he'll let me.
Tried to think about that a week ago. Okay.
Terrible.
All right, I appreciate it very much.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, is there anybody else who'd like to come up and speak then, my please? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to a public hearing. Public hearing to consider the following, item number seven. Council, the public hearing, consider the adoption of resolution establishing new fees for advertising at Hogan Innis Park with an effective date of December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Is this you, Tammy?
It is.
It is, okay.
So Mayor and Council, before you tonight, we are asking you to hold a public hearing considering the adoption of a resolution establishing new fees for advertising at Hogan Innis Park with an effective date of December eighteenth. Um, staff and the Recreation Commission have discussed the potential of allowing advertising banners to be displayed at Hogan. Um, staff and the recreation commissioner have discussed the potential of allowing advertising banners to be displayed at Hogan Field. Staff researched, found neighboring fields that offer similar programs. And we also reached out to Escalon High School because, um, we did notice they had banners this year. Unfortunately, we didn't get a response from them, um, how they run their program. Uh, Oakdale Baseball and Softball Association offers a team sponsor at three twenty-five, which is just the back of the jerseys. Their outfield sign is one seventy-five. And that sign's mounted to a home run fence and then from March to June, and then returning fence sign sponsors, so. Uh, they already have their sign as a hundred dollars. Bell Passy Fields, they do a team sponsors four hundred and their field sign is a three by five and it's two hundred. And their signs are up March to March and a new banner is required each year. Um, and that's for aesthetic purposes, so you, you don't get worn out banners out there. So staff is proposing that the banner advertising be from the beginning of baseball or softball, which is early March, to the end of flag football, early December. And that a new banner is required each year in order to maintain the appearance of the banners. Staff did contact our local business, All Say Anything Designs. They're willing to work directly with those businesses wishing to do the banner advertisement. And quoted a price of a hundred dollars. Of course, additional charges may apply based on artwork. So staff is proposing that the field banner advertising for a three by five be three hundred and fifty dollars for an annual fee that does not include the banner. Um, so the banner would be the extra hundred dollars. Um, and then if they were to sponsor a baseball softball team, it would reduce the, the advertising by fifty dollars. Sponsor fees are currently two hundred dollars for a baseball team, so then it would be three hundred dollars if they wanted to do the banner also. So a total of five hundred dollars. We will be able to utilize our advertising policy that we created in two thousand eighteen. Uh, banners are being proposed at the three by five size and to keep them uniform and will be installed by Public Works. Revenues from the advertising will be create, credited towards the recreation department and will assist in reducing the subsidy of the general, from the general fund. Um, and I have some, uh, what we've subsidized for the recreation department in eighteen nineteen was about eighty thousand. And is estimated in nineteen twenty about a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Staff is requesting the fees to be effective December eighteenth, so that we can send out letters to potential baseball softball sponsors and include the new advertising offer. Typically, we would have already sent out those letters at this point. We held off to try and get this so that we can include it in those letters. Um, so attached to your staff report, um, is the draft letter to be sent out to the businesses regarding sponsorship and the field fence banners.
You asked, the Escalon High School didn't get back to you?
They did not.
From what I understand, and the reason I say that, because the Lions Club has a banner out there every year. I do believe they keep the same banner every year. They asked us if we wanna renew it. And I forget what the cost is, but, uh, you know, of course, it's renewed every year and therefore that's, they do, I believe, use the same banner as long as it's in good shape. It's been a good program for them. They've raised a lot of money with that, so.
Yeah, we couldn't get a response.
Yeah, we had a banner out there too. I think it was two or three hundred dollars for the, the year, and then you could renew it for a little less if you wanna keep the same. I have a question. So whoever, you know, so say a local business gets a banner, who, who puts it up? The city will put it up?
Right.
The city will take them down, the city will store them, then they'll put them back.
At the end of the year, they would be given back to the business.
Okay, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking of the logistics of it, okay.
Because, because what we're proposing is that there's a new banner every year.
Oh, so you can't use the same banner that's.
Just because of the weather. It's out there all year long. It's out there in the summer, it's out there.
Oh, so you're gonna require a, a, a business to get a new one every year?
Yes, yes.
They're gonna get beat up.
That's what's being proposed, yes.
Yeah.
Why is there a specific vendor they have to buy the banner from?
Um, they don't have to buy, um, I guess they don't have to specifically go to All Say Anything. We were just. Looking for somebody that would do a uniform and at a, at a good rate. Um, and keeping it local.
'Cause I know that in some of the sports my family's been involved with, uh, there are people on the team that have print shops or, you know, they want. The ability to provide a banner to the team, so.
I think as long as they're consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we'll make sure that we have the guidelines, so. Again, we just reached out to the local vendor, trying to, to provide a local, and we don't want to coordinate artwork or the design. Because I, as staff, we don't wanna be responsible if there's a misspelling or something. We want that business to work directly with the vendor, so.
I think it's a good idea. Make, bring us some new revenue, yeah. People love to advertise, so.
It's gonna be great advertising. There's a lot of people that go to that field, so.
A lot more go there than to the baseball field.
This is a public hearing, so I'd like to open the public hearing at this point. And please, uh, if you have any questions or concerns, it's your chance. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action.
I'd move with staff's recommendation.
Could I say one thing? If you're, if you're not gonna require that they be purchased from All Say Anything, then there are a couple wording changes.
Oh, in the letter?
Well, and, and the exhibit to the resolution too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we should change that.
Just like, it, it says ban, on, on the exhibit, it says banners to be purchased directly from, and you could just say banners may be purchased directly.
Just leave it out.
Yeah.
Just say may be purchased locally or otherwise. That way you don't have any commitment or any bias in any way that way.
Okay.
Do we have to indicate that if they don't buy it there, that it has to be consistent with what?
That's 'cause you're using.
What, what do you think about that?
Yeah, um.
For sure, by at least size, if nothing else.
Size is the big thing and then the, I would imagine that we wanna make sure like grommets are durable too, you know, like the quality of the banner.
Nope.
To withhold weather out there, so.
Yeah.
So we can, we can do it.
'Cause you can buy like signage that's made of hard plastic, you know, that's way better, nicer, or you could buy that, just the fabric stuff, and if there's inconsistency, it might look kind of shoddy.
That's, and like, um, look, um, Councilman Shapiro said, I think it's gonna find, they're gonna find it hard to find better deal than a hundred dollars for a three by five. That's a great price from All Say Anything. But fortunately, if you do have something, that would be great. We don't wanna restrict somebody from that, but that's, that's a pretty killer deal for a banner.
So the motion was made to go with staff's recommendation. I don't think we had a second yet, did we?
No.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, we did?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's go back to this then. Maker of the motion, would you like to change the wording then, instead of say that you will be, banners be purchased directly from All Say Anything? To something like banners may be purchased?
I think that makes a little more sense. You could even go so far as to say that, that this particular business, um. You, is the standard for banners. Um, so you, you can buy them from them or you can buy an equivalent from another vendor if you so choose, but that's, that is the standard.
Okay, so the motion's already moved and seconded, and now we're looking at.
Size?
Right.
Amendment.
Yeah, if, yeah, the motion's already moved and seconded, and now we're looking at amending it to say that banners, banners may be purchased from All Say Anything?
I think that's the easiest way to deal with it.
Okay, are you, would you accept that amendment?
And, so, hold on. I think that we need to say may be purchased directly from All Say Anything Designs and must meet guidelines set by the city.
That works.
If, if we say may be purchased by this one company, w- why do, why is, it's like, why is that in there? I don't, doesn't matter.
I think, I think it's because some.
How about you can buy it from wherever you want, as long as it meets.
Maybe just give it to her somewhere to go, you know.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Somebody that doesn't really have a connection anywhere, then.
I mean, if you put in May, yeah, May, may, may get, may's enough to give you the option.
I'm fine, that's fine.
Just give them an option, yeah.
Do you accept the amendment?
I do.
Uh, Councilmember Merkin, do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on to an amended motion. That has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, uh, we will proceed to a vote. Jamie, could you please read the motion back? You knew that was coming.
Good luck.
Yeah. The motion was made by Alves and seconded by Merkin to approve item seven as presented with regards to the banners. I don't know in what part, sorry.
Yeah.
In exhibit A?
Yes.
A to the resolution.
Exhibit A to the resolution, change of wording to be may be purchased by All Say Anything Designs under, as long as.
With city guidelines.
Under the city guidelines.
Okay, I think we got, I think we got it.
And must be consistent with city guidelines.
It must be consistent, okay.
Yeah, that way you don't, we don't show any prejudice and, 'cause there's another sign company in town too, probably.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes five to zero. Council Communications, Councilmember Cromick.
Go Cougars. Congratulations to the Escalon High Football Team, uh, Coach Andrew Beam. I really like that guy. Um, I think he's a good guy and he's doing a good job with the program, obviously. Uh, state champion, so it was fun at Christmas on Main. It seemed to be another, um, fun time. I was a little lonely up there in the city council float. But, uh, luckily I had my kids with me. We ran out of candy pretty quick, so next year I'll try to bring at least a thousand gallons of candy.
I was concerned about your safety with that driver you had.
Yeah, me too. She took off, my little baby fell down, but it's. Anyways, it's okay. Um, that was a lot of fun. Um, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and, uh, um, it was a fun twenty nineteen. Um, hopefully twenty twenty, we can get a lot of, a lot of good things done and continue to cut the red tape and stranglehold of government at every level. And, uh, but we continue to work together for the betterment of our community.
Councilmember Cromick, thank you very much. Councilmember Legero.
Thank you, Mayor Swift. Um, it's been a very busy weekend, but got to spend some quality time with officers from our police department and some, uh, pretty, uh, awesome training over the weekend. So that, uh, it's been in the works for about a year and a half and it finally came together here this, uh, this weekend. I think it was pretty well received. I thought it's some of the best training that I'd ever, uh, observed or attended. So I thought that was great. So thanks for making that happen and, uh, we'll work on getting the rest of them through here, uh, end of February, early March.
Councilmember Legero, thank you very much. Councilmember Merkin.
Have we ever looked into a charging station for electric vehicles?
We have.
And?
And, um, the grants that were out there, we were still, was still gonna end up costing us somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to install it.
What do we make in money?
We can't find a, a Tesla that'll come up here and put one in for us?
Um, no, I don't, I don't think Tesla would. I mean, they usually do large charging bases. I don't know.
I know about that. There's one in Manteca.
Yeah.
There's one in Manteca. My son uses it with his new Tesla and he has to stop in Manteca and charge before he comes to see me.
Right.
Yeah.
I did that today.
Yeah, so, um.
But I know, and Tesla doesn't even have any like Modesto this way at all.
No, they have the minor charging stations over there, but the big supercharger is in Manteca.
Yeah, and you know, that could be something that we include in the, um, infrastructure proposal thing too, is having them look at that, a charging station.
Yeah, 'cause that was.
'Cause I did, we did look at it here at City Hall, trying to get one in here.
Taco Bell.
And we looked at the one, we looked at putting it in the park and ride by Taco Bell, but that, um.
They'd have to bring in another, uh, um.
Another transformer?
Transformer, yeah.
Because that transformer's already overloaded, so we were talking about a big dollar expense from, to do that over there. Um.
I was thinking about the park and ride or downtown next to the bank. Or if we're smart, we would put one out where we have businesses, 'cause it takes twenty to thirty minutes to charge.
Which is why we looked at Taco Bell area because of the businesses.
Or the shopping center out on, uh, you know, by the.
Charge a vehicle.
Giovanni's and everything out there, good, while they're charging, they might go in and.
Right.
Few dollars.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I, I was, I know that Tesla, before they'll come in and do one, they want like eight spaces.
That's what, yeah, I was gonna say. I'm sure they, usually typically they have a large block of them.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, uh, the only other thing I have is echo the appreciation to the Escalon Football Team for bringing us another championship. And I got my wife back now that, uh, this, the Christmas on Main Street is over, so until Park feet again, I guess I'll, I'll see her once in a while. And wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Hey, Councilmember Merkin, thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem Alves.
Uh, football, great deal. That was wonderful, again, to see that. It's a, it's quite a tribute to our small community. Here we are, seven thousand people and we're kicking the butt of these bigger towns and bigger teams. We got bumped up two levels. It just says a lot about the quality of individuals we have. Says a lot about the coaching, the mentality of this community, so I'm real impressed with that and I'm also thankful for it. Um, training this weekend with, uh, Jeff and the police department was, uh, it was a workout. Two out, two days on your feet all day wears you out. And all the guns firing, I don't know how many rounds we went through, what, thousands?
Several thousand.
Several thousand rounds. I'll tell you something, uh, if our police officer didn't learn anything, I'd be shocked. Because there was a lot to learn and I'll tell you, the guy that did it, man, I'll tell you, heat's on ya. And you either learn or you get burned. And I got burned three times and actually my shell's coming out of the other gun. Yeah, it hurts. You know, it was wonderful, it was really good. And, uh, so that's all I got to say.
Mayor Pro Tem Alves, thank you very much. A couple things real quick. Whose idea was it for the reserves on Saturday night to be handing out candy canes? I was on the visitor's side, okay, 'cause it's, you know, but somebody, they were handing out candy canes to all the kiddos in the crowd. That was such a nice touch. Yes, it was, yes, it was.
Probably their own idea.
Is that right? Well, you know, you let them know, that was a fantastic touch. I have no idea if they did on the, the home side. Because, I mean, I showed up there at five, so I could, kids sitting on the home side could buy already. Uh, but anyway, you let them know that that was such a nice touch.
I will pass it along.
You know, I don't know if they would do that in La Jolla, but now La Jolla knows we do that here, okay? And that's just one of the many manifestations of, and I know we were all on about this weekend. That's one of the many manifestations that you saw of how this community works. And then how, and how, you know, we, that's just how Escalon is, both Saturday and Sunday at Christmas on Main. And by the way, thank you for all the help, city, Public Works, uh, police, uh, Tammy, okay? Everybody's assisted in that event, Christmas on Main. What you saw at both those events, this entire weekend, this is the soul of this community, okay? This is town, it's a small town. We like it being a small town, but we value family and community. And people come to this town and that's what they see, and they're like, oh my gosh, there are still towns like this that exist, and it's not everywhere.
Not just on Hallmark Channel.
No, it's not. No, this, this really is Mayberry. This really is the setting of every Hallmark movie. It does exist and I think that any and every decision we make as a council. We need to keep that in mind. We need to keep the events of this last weekend in mind. That's what we're trying to preserve as a town. That's our soul right there. That's what you saw with the Cougar Team, with Christmas on Main. And no matter what we do, we've gotta keep that paramount. We've gotta make sure we do everything we can to keep that going for as many generations as we can, 'cause it is something special. And boy, it's something that we have and most towns don't have. So you know what? Are we privileged? You bear believe we are. Let's keep it that way.
Amen.
Merry Christmas, everybody, and we're gonna retire to closed session. If you wanna say, go ahead. Um, if you don't, I, I guess I'll understand, so, okay.
Dave, there's story.